They had stuff all over me.
Hello, sir.
What was your percentage? How many times you stopped breathing an hour?
I took it back. They haven't called me yet.
Oh, they hadn't? Mine was one hundred and ninety-seven.
You stopped breathing?
Yeah.
And you're still here?
In an hour.
Tough man.
No, that's what they said.
Tough man. Oh. Bro. Here we go. Tough man. I probably stopped for about forty-five minutes and there we go.
Can you guys do a sound check?
Can you hear us, Joe?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Thank you for joining us.
Of course. Happy to. Thank you for allowing my participation this way.
Thank you, sir.
Does Joseph got these digitally?
Yes, sir. I just sent them to Joseph. Joseph, did you receive the PowerPoint slides via email?
Um, I'm gonna look over. Sorry, let me flip over there. I'm sure I'm sure they're coming in if they have it already. Oh, yep, just got them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, folks. All right, it's six o'clock. We'll continue the second budget meeting, workshop. Brady, you got some stuff for us?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everybody. That was it, what you had, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Joe, have you got the presentation pulled up?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Dooley, you want to go over here?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. First of all, thank y'all for adjusting the schedule for today instead of yesterday. This was yesterday. So the T-ball look on the screen up there. That's my little man on the left. So I appreciate that.
I'm missing a game tonight.
Well, I think I think those types of things keep everything in perspective.
That's right. That's right.
A lot of fun. All right. I just wanted to recap first from last meeting. Y'all had several questions and items for staff to look into, so I just wanted to recap through those. First of all, the road decal funds, you all asked if we could transfer some funds to CIP for the sidewalk project. That memo has been written by finance and sent to the treasurer's office. So the two hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars will be transferred from the road decal fund to the CIP.
How much was that?
Two hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. So that memo has been written. Also, the memo for the transfer to the general fund for the sheriff's vehicles and the ambulance has been sent to the treasurer as well. Um, what was included in that memo was to transfer the remaining amount of those proffer funds to the CIP account, except the minimum account, the minimum amount needed to keep the account open that those proffer funds were in because we're still getting proffer funds. So we're not closing the account. Um, so all the funds that were remaining, except the minimum, will be transferred. I don't have an exact dollar figure there. It's about, it's the upper fours, near five hundred thousand dollars that will be transferred to CIP. So between those two transfers to CIP, it's about seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The real estate proceeds that Mr. Robinson had mentioned, when I talked to finance, uh, I was advised that those are customarily transferred at the end of the year, that every year we have some delinquent proceeds come in. Um, and when we have taxes, the years we have delinquent proceeds come in, when we have tax sales, that those are just transferred at the end of the year. So but finances on that to transfer those. That was the fifty-one thousand. So that would go to your general fund. That would transfer from, uh, from where they're being held now to your general fund.
And at the end of the year, would it go into a separate account? Like Mr. Robinson requested.
Um, we could set that up, but we'd have to set that up with the treasurer's office for her in her accounting. Or her record keeping. The six-year, uh, secondary road plan, um, or the secondary six-year road plan. I talked with V-Doc, the it's all state funding. I know that was a question. It is all state funding, no local funding. And just for information, it's comes from the tele fees, which are rental fees generated from telecommunications companies that utilize the beat out right away. So anybody, any telecommunications company that's utilizing beat out right away pays rental fees in Amelia. And all those rental fees in Amelia are what is put into that fund. Plus, there's an additional formula that provides some funds that calculates your land area, your population, and your number of unpaved road lane miles. And those two things together are what makes up your funding allocation. That's your secondary six-year road plan. So it is all state funding, and that's just a little brief description of what makes up that state funding. As you know, excuse Mr. Jones, as you know, the unpaved road lane miles are decreasing, so that calculation is going to go down. So we'll get less and less from that part of the equation.
But it builds up, it builds builds up every year.
Yep, we get a little bit every year.
Sorry, sorry, guys.
These towers for these here are cell phone towers. That, you know, we approved one here several months back, what up? How much do we get the county gets on a tax to them or et cetera?
They would be taxed under your
I mean, do we have a local county tax? Other than real estate, I mean.
Just be a real estate.
Just real estate.
It might be some machinery and tools. I don't know, but I think most of it's real estate.
Um, Mr. Easter had requested some information on the wastewater treatment plan upgrades, particularly how much of that three hundred and seven thousand that is in the CIP account, how much of that might be spared. Right now, uh, we, our system utilizes a chlorine based treatment. And Daryl, as we discussed last time, is looking at transitioning away from that. That's what this whole project was for. Instead of going to the UV, which, uh, was deemed that was going to be much more expensive to operate, they're looking at a transition to sodium hypochlorite for the treatment base. He still thinks he may need all three hundred and seven thousand, and the reason why is because to transition from the chlorine treatment to the sodium hypochlorite, we have to engage with DEQ and dispatch our engineer that's on retainer to handle all that for us. So we're gonna have to pay the engineer fees just to go through the whole DEQ process regulatory wise of navigating that transition from chlorine to sodium hypochlorite. So Daryl didn't feel comfortable at this time saying that we would have any funds left over because he's not sure how exhaustive of a process, uh, process that's gonna be.
Okay. Well, I thank you for checking into that and
Yes, sir, buddy.
Unfortunately, it didn't pan out of any savings there, but always good to look at all of our options. Thank you, and Daryl.
All right, the radio project grant, that money has not been spent yet towards the project, so that's still out there. Uh, Mr. Felt had asked about EMS revenue recovery and if we were factoring that into the budget.
Can can we back up to the radio project grant? That was a million dollars, wasn't it?
Yeah, a million dollars.
Okay.
So the EMS revenue recovery, that is, there was an amount budgeted or factored into the FY twenty-four budget, which was about six hundred thousand dollars. According to Ms. Smith, those funds are likely, that amount's probably gonna be about five hundred thousand dollars. This year, in the budget that you have before you, the revenues are showing about seven hundred thousand dollars of projected revenues. Ms. Smith feels like based on the this year, that it's probably, instead of coming in at seven, it'll probably come in around six. Because this this current year, it was projected at six, but she thinks it's gonna come in around five. So the sheet that I gave you all that has the red number on it, you would want to add a hundred thou- if you want to adjust the revenue figure down to what Ms. Smith is recommending at this time, that would add a hundred thousand dollars to that two point one seven four one four one million. If we adjusted the revenue to six hundred thousand. I didn't make that adjustment. This sheet, and I'll explain that in a second, is sort of where we left off last week. So I didn't want to make any adjustments. This sheet's where we were working from last week. Or last week, two weeks ago, my apologies. We've engaged the county attorney on meals tax. A referendum is not required per the county attorney, and I have also pulled Dimwitty County's ordinance. I will share with you via email a copy of that ordinance so that you all can review that, um, over the next couple of weeks. Something that Dimwitty County does, which I believe is standard in most localities, and I know this is a big concern, is the processing of that by the companies that would be or the entities that be required to, uh, pass those funds along to the county. So the meals tax would be paid by the customer that is purchasing the prepared food and beverage products. But then the entity that is selling those prepared food and beverage products would have to transfer those funds to the county. And Dimwitty County has a three percent, uh, basically three percent deduction um, that they give back to that entity for the processing of that. So three percent of the total amount that that entity pays, that entity gets to keep that three percent for the processing aspect. So the Amelia could do the same thing if they considered a meals tax. They could do a percentage of the total tax that that entity is is processing on behalf of the county back to that entity to cover any processing related activities cost-wise. I was also at, we were also, staff has asked about court fees and fines in terms of them being possibly to be used for the courthouse renovations. The way that it is now, those are, uh, in a count that's an assigned count, so it's not within our unassigned balances. And it's for courthouse security funds. And so it's only for things related to security. Uh, also in the in an assigned count, similar to that is all your forfeited forfeited assets. And I wanted to mention that. So all your sheriff and Commonwealth attorney forfeited assets, those are all in an assigned account. We discussed the local sales and use tax. Remember, the Senate had passed, the House and the delegates, House delegates and the Senate had passed a one, a bill that would allow for a one percent local sales and use tax increase if passed on a local referendum or after the whole holding of local referendum. But all those funds could only be used for school construction. The governor of related activities, the governor vetoed that bill on April eighth. So that bill is going back. Last time we had, uh, subtracted the fire truck from the operating capital outlay, it had put a value of five hundred thousand on that. After, um, the firefighters were engaged on this, they requested to keep sixty thousand of that five hundred thousand. So the adjusted budget figure that you have on the printout before you, that does take into account that sixty thousand being put back in. So it would be, uh, four forty in terms of the reduction in capital outlay.
What was the logic for that or reason for the request?
Think Mr. Fels can speak to that maybe a little bit better than I can.
I don't necessarily have a problem with that. I just wanted to understand it.
The five hundred thousand, Joseph, was to purchase a new truck, but it was, the action figure was four forty and sixty thousand of that was used to replace equipment when it aged down, like on airbags.
I got you. It wasn't. It wasn't all. Sure, that makes sense. Okay, thank you.
I have a question on a meal tax.
Okay.
Okay, restaurant has a cooler in there and it has Coca-Cola, Pepsi, et cetera. You get it with the meal. You pay a meal tax on that. Yet seven eleven diner sells the same drink.
I don't know if they factor in if you buy a bottle of drink. I don't think so. You got a fountain drink, it would factor in.
Yeah, it's only prepared foods.
Yep. That's not great. Yeah. Okay. Clicker. Clicker stop work.
Does the, um, back to the courthouse fees, courthouse security, does it, does the sheriff actually get some of that for his security he provides or is it?
I I would have to go back and pull the actual dispersments of that to give you specifics. It's about what was in there. Uh, the when I most recently checked with the treasurer was under thirty thousand dollars was in there in that line.
I just I just used the mouse.
I find it, I find it odd, dude.
Even a speeding ticket.
I was using working now.
And a million doesn't any money come back to the county.
Definitely willing to further investigate. Okay. All right. Also, at the end, uh, Mr. Easter, uh, had mentioned, uh, and Mr. Robinson had mentioned, just wondering what the additional requests were that were out there. This is the basically a summary of the additional requests. As far as positions go, there's a list of the additional positions that were requested this year in comparison to the level funded budget. So the level funded budget would not include any of those additional position requests. The level funded budget would also not include include any minor miscellaneous increases. And I went through and, uh, it's, you know, going through each line, it's nothing too drastic, but the main ones are like fuel, repairs and maintenance, any materials like parks and rec, for example, might have some increase in terms of what they're gonna use in seating or chalking. So all those lines, like vehicle repairs and maintenance, standard repairs and maintenance fuel, those had minor miscellaneous increases across departments. And then the schools fully funded, uh, request is seven point three million. Um, and so that would be, of course, over the level funded budget that we are currently operating off of in terms of these workshops. And between all those requests, it's about eight hundred thousand dollars of additional funds. Now, I'm not including the capital outlay items that uh, like the fire truck in that eight hundred thousand. So I've I've taken the capital outlay out of that. So aside from those capital outlay items, it's about eight hundred thousand dollars of additional requests.
What's the minimum? I gotta increase the minimum salary.
I think there's some break. What is what is the salary now? Thirteen, I think it's thirteen dollars an hour. And what they're, basically their rationale behind that is they're finding it a really hard time to get part-time people to work all their stuff. And so they're just finding it hard to attract people at at that rate to do all the little activities related to their events. All right. So that sort of cat, uh, catches us up in terms of all y'all's questions from last month, I mean, last sub workshops. Is there anything that I missed there from that meeting?
I don't know if any right offhand, but what notes I had, you hit all those.
And I know there's more information out there that I can gather on certain things, but in terms of mental capacity wise, we're it's about all we could get done. So if there is anything else, just send me an email that you think of and we'll we'll get it done as soon as possible. All right. I want to talk to you all now about your fund balance trends. Um, this, I think, is a big factor in terms of what you all decide this evening and moving forward and how you're gonna balance the general fund particularly, but balance the budget. These are, this is FY twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. Um, FY twenty-one and twenty-two, of course, is the actual audit, and we did receive the draft audit this week. It's still being reviewed by finance. It has been reviewed by county administration at this time. Um, so it's not finalized, but these number, the FY twenty-three numbers are the numbers from the draft audit. Your unassigned general fund fund balance in FY twenty-one was seven point three million. Uh, that's the unassigned figure. Um, so that's what our financial policy says should be about thirty percent of your general fund expenditures. At twenty-two, twenty-three million dollars of expenditures at the time, that was over thirty percent. This year, our projected expenditures are twenty-five million. So to have at least thirty percent, you would need about eight million. What you'll see is we have about three point three million today. It dropped a one point eight million uh, in FY twenty-two, and it dropped an additional two point five or so in FY twenty-three. Now that's unassigned. There is a amount of assigned fund balance that is in your general fund, which is your, which is some landfill investment money that's not capital improvement related. It's landfill investment funds that have come in, and that's that total amount of that money is about a million dollars. Um, so if you add that million, it's a four point something million total general fund fund balance, but unassigned, meaning you can use it for your operations uh, or use it for any purpose, you have about three point three million as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. So that's a June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, you're at about three point three million.
Those landfill accounts, we can't use those. Those are there.
You can't use them. Yep, that's not capital improvement monies. That's not landfill. That's not the tip and fee check that we we get. That's separate of the money. But it is in your audit, you'll see it in your general fund category. So your general fund fund balance will show like four point something million. But your unassigned, you'll see your unassigned listed as three point three eight, which is monies you can use. Simultaneously, your capital improvement fund has gone up. So it went up about three million from FY twenty-one to twenty-two and about three million again to FY twenty-three. And most of that three million increase in your capital improvement fund is the tip and fees that you that you all have received from the landfill. There is some interest in other monies that do factor in, but most of that's there. So cash on hand right now, uh, or cash on hand as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three is about twenty million dollars between the general fund, the capital improvement fund, and the special revenue fund. Now, the special revenue fund, today it stands at a million nine hundred and seventy thousand of that in June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three is the proffers money. So when that, all those proffers are transferred out, whether the monies that have been appropriated for the sheriff's vehicle and the ambulance or the monies that are transferred to the CIP fund, that line will go from a million to about fifty thousand. But that's what your special revenue fund is there.
And to get you that twenty million, you're adding the three point three, fourteen point seven, and a million in landfill issue.
I don't, what I don't have included on this chart is the the one million roughly in landfill money that we can't touch. It's not on this chart. Okay. Cause it's, it's there, but we can't do anything with it.
Yeah.
So if you add that one million plus your three three eight plus your fourteen seven and then your one million fifteen, it comes out to about twenty million and that's about And that's about the cash the county has on hand. And that's what is funding the county's operations. So we're funding that, the operations with those funds. And then as more revenue comes in, of course, it replenishes, but all those are in different investment accounts. Uh, some are in regular savings, money market, mutual funds. The treasurer's office has dispersed them and she'll give you a list if you're interested in terms of where they're all held. So just recapping, your unassigned general fund, fund balance had decreased about $4 million in two years from July 21, 2021 to July 30th, 2023. And after reviewing revenue actuals with the treasurer's office, it appears that another significant fund balance transfer will likely be needed to cover county operating expenses. So you went down to 3.3 and it seems like you're going to need most likely another significant amount. And I'd put my neck out there and say it's probably going to be close to 2 million that you would need to cover a budget deficit this year due to the revenue actuals that were tracked. If it comes in under 2 million, that's good news. The capital improvement fund increased by approximately six million during that timeframe. So you had a significant increase in your capital improvement fund. However, nearly all of those funds have been committed towards projects. Once I, uh, calculated for the transfers from the road decal fund, the transfer from your proffers for the, uh, in terms of, for the projects that that would go to. So when I calculated for the road decal fund transfer for the 222,175 for the sidewalk project. When I calculated for the $500,000 rough transfer from the proffers fund to the CIP that could be used for anything. And then when I calculated for some of our corrections on project estimates, particularly the animal shelter planning, there are about $200,000 under budget there. Um, that shook out to that you're going to have about $740,000 remaining if all the projects that are currently appropriated were completed. I know that's a mouthful, but if all the projects that the board has currently appropriated were completed today, and then you added in the transfers that occurred for the road decal fund, from the proffers and some of the adjusted estimates on those projects, you'd have about $740,000 remaining in your capital improvement funds.
Plus, plus what the landfill produces through the course of the year.
Exactly. So you, that money, that, that amount would go up about $200,000 a month is what we've been seeing. About 200,000 a month.
Maybe.
Possibly. The, the, the most recent month came in under 200,000. It didn't.
Latest one just came in. It's back to 230 something.
230, the one before that came in under 200,000. All right. The special revenue funds, uh, increased like over a million dollars, but, uh, it's going to reduce back down once the profit process. So that's going to pretty much be nothing. But I think I might have that wrong. So I think it'll only increase like 200,000, but it's, it's at over a million. But it'll go back down about 50,000. All right. So now I think the biggest thing for the board is to talk about is to really get into the ditty gritty of how we're going to balance the general fund. Uh, the projected general fund budget deficit with a level funded budget, including the assessor and EMS expansion, no cola, was 3.155 million. When you decrease the operating capital outlay, which stood at about 1.1 billion in that budget, when you decrease it 981,000, that's what gets you down to your 2.174141 that I gave you on your sheet. That's how we got there in terms of your projected general fund budget. Now you would need to likely add 100,000 to that. So it'd be 2.274141 because of the updated information on the EMS revenue recovered. So you're starting at about 2.2 million in terms of working towards a, a a balanced budget. I think it's imperative that this year significant changes are made and actions taken place because of how low your general fund, fund balance was, as was shown on the prior slide. With what potentially is going to happen this year, I don't think you're going to have the cushion there to support it. And if the capital improvement fund is allowed to move forward and not frozen, if projects are allowed to continue that have been appropriated, a lot of those funds are going to come off the books here in the next 18 to 24 months as well. And so ways to balance the general fund. The first way and the way that nobody likes, uh, is tax increases or rate increases. And this is an overview of what that looks like. Your real estate tax is currently 38 cents per a hundred dollars of value. I showed you all a chart last week of where Amelia County ranked. Each penny added to that would be about $185,000 of additional revenue. So each penny on top of 38 cents per a hundred dollars of value would be about $185,000 of additional revenue. Personal property tax, it's 415. You were ranked fourth out of seven in terms of the surrounding counties, uh, not including Chesterfield, substituting Buckingham. Each penny equals about $16,000. Each penny added on top of that. Your machinery and tools tax is a dollar. It was the lowest out of surrounding counties and the machinery and tools tax has not been adjusted since 1991. Each quarter equals $50,000. So another dollar would be 200,000. Your meals tax, if you took any action this year related to meals tax, it's likely that it could not be put in place until halfway through the fiscal year. Most likely beginning January 1st, 2025. For the treasurer's office, the commissioner revenues office, county staff and the business entities in this area to get prepared to accommodate it. I'd say the earliest you could expect it would be January 1st, 2025. So at a 5% meals tax, that's about $150,000. Your decal fees, right now they're $5. That's about 107,000. So another $5 increase, for example, would be 214,000. To use them elsewhere, however, to use them outside of your road decal fund would require that you have an ordinance amendment. So you'd have to hold a public hearing and have an ordinance amendment to use those fees for anything other than putting them in the road decal fund, which currently must be used towards road improvements on the second day road system.
While, while we're there, I did have a thought. With the change of ordinance or public process, if we suspended the five dollars going to the road crew, road improvements, we have a million. But if we suspended that for a year, that's a $5. There'd be about 107 that would help. I don't know what y'all's thoughts on that is. It's so limited of what we can use it for. And we're not doing a six-year plan this, this year. And we're already going to use some for the sidewalk project. It's just a thought while he was there.
I, I'm much more in favor of that than increasing the, the decal fee. Uh, because I think the decal fee is, you know, I've stressed my concern, the decal fee kind of increases the already higher end of the personal property tax essentially, but I think you have a good point on that, David, because we're really not able to get much use out of that, that fund that the $5 is going into. I, I think to free up that money would be very helpful.
All right, Brad. Yep. And then we talked last workshop about a water sewer rate increase. What Darryl, uh, suggested if the board was to do it, he suggested a water increase not be considered at this time. He suggested a sewer increase, um, may be considered and if it was, he thought it would be a $2 base fee increase with $1 per thousand gallon of u, uh, usage and ERC, uh, C stands for, um, an existing residential connection, I mean, a equivalent residential connection. So the, uh, like $1 per thousand gallon usage for an equivalent residential connection would be the rate increase. $2 base fee with a $1 per thousand gallon usage rate increase for an equivalent residential connection.
There was some talk during the past couple of weeks. There was a, there was a, the hookups was reduced by half during COVID. Um, from 14,000 to 7,500. Am I saying that right?
Yeah, I think it was actually reduced beginning in 2007, but it was continued through the years. The recommended rate in 2007 was $14,000 for both and that was cut in half. So it's at seven, the recommended level in 2007. It certainly hadn't gone down any since then. It's $14,000.
What was the reason for reducing it?
The re, the original risk reason to reduce it was to spur development and growth. But this is included in our rate sheets now. It was adopted by the board, I guess for two years. Yep. So we, we would just have to modify that if that was the will of the board.
That would certainly help when the debt service, that money doesn't go into the general fund.
It couldn't go to the general fund. We, we met with the engineer or retainer to discuss uses potentially for those facility fees. They're primarily supposed to be used towards any infrastructure improvements that the system would have to increase capacity. So if we had a treatment plant upgrade or something like that. Uh, however, we're still waiting on some confirmation in terms of if we could use it for some of our more day-to-day like debt service, which the debt service was, uh, for the system being built. So that's something that we're still find, trying to figure out, uh, find a confident answer on.
Well, certainly it would probably be, it would alleviate some of the strain on the CIP and some of the wastewater treatment upgrades and.
Hopefully some of the projects that would be CIP eligible, hopefully we could shift facility fees towards them is what would be the hope.
Okay. It's just an idea.
And those are, facility fees are paid by, basically by developers. When they build houses, they pay certain fees per their connections, depending on the size of meter and, um, everything else. Be used for it, facility improvements.
Okay.
All right.
Yes, sir.
So that's your revenue items, your main revenue items, I think you can look at. Um, outside of revenue items, these, there's some existing unfilled positions. The sheriff's office has a full-time position, D and B. The registrar has a part-time position, common with attorney has a part-time position. About 130,000, you could basically move forward. Uh, with the premise of not filling some of your unfilled positions. There are other unfilled positions. If you want an entire unfilled position list, I can give you, I can get Mary Beth Smith to send you that list, but there are some other ones, including the finance director, which is why you got this bozo here helping you.
But you might just get a new job.
Can you, can you get to, I think those figures would be good.
Yep.
Trying all the vacant positions.
All the vacant positions. And then another factor that's going to impact the balancing of the general fund, let's say you were to unfill, you were to move forward with leaving those positions unfilled. The 3% cola is going to add about 140,000 to the figure that you have before you. So your figure on your sheet was 2174. If you add the $100,000 of, uh, lost or of revenue projection decrease, if you had a hundred thousand dollars there would make that number 2274. And if you added the 140, it would go from 2274 to 2341 or something. I mean, 2441.
But the unfilled positions would almost fund a 3% call.
Right.
Okay.
That's why I sort of put those together.
All right. It's a lot of work, Brady. Thank you, sir.
With that said, uh, if y'all have any questions for me, please ask and at this time, you're sort of, you're state and that personal property, uh, would include the personal property tax relief provided by the state. We're up, we're, we're working from about 13.5 there. So of, of your 22.9, you're working from about 13.5 in terms of those two lines and that's your, of course, your main two revenue generation items, real estate, your personal.
And I, I've got to say it. We have significantly drained our fund balance to keep, to keep working. We cannot take another hit on that. We're at three something. We ought to be around seven something. So I strongly urge everybody to figure out how we can balance this budget without the going into the fund balance. I know I hate going into my savings at home and I tried not doing it. I, I think we got to do the same thing here. So gentlemen, I'm open to suggestions. We've been over this about the sixth time, I think we've talked about the budget. We've had three budgets presented to us. I'm open to suggestions. What y'all want to do? We can, we tap it into the fund balances out of the question. Actually putting some of the fund balance would help us, but I'd settle for not tapping into it anymore.
I don't disagree with you, but since you're setting the parameters, I think you should, uh, continue and, uh, share other suggestions and recommendations.
I, I have shared mine. Um, I had worked with county staff, the previous budgets that were presented and they didn't go anywhere. So I am kind of all out of suggestion. I have looked at what the administration has proposed. It's pretty drastic. I don't like it. But I, I don't. Going into, going into the fund balance, I like a whole lot worse. So I'm, I'm up for suggestions. I've, I've done. I've done about all I can do with it. I've, I've staff has sent out some, some suggestions. Being a, the vice chair, I've been involved in those. So somebody, somebody tell me where we need to go and where staff needs to go.
Well, I think everybody needs to be prepared to be stunned a little bit. Just face it, we're, we're, we gotta do something. So I'll kick it off this last page. I, I don't see why we need to fill those positions right now.
I think a good way to describe that would be to freeze those.
Invest the right word. Yes.
And don't fund them. Don't take them away, but just freeze them.
Okay. If that's the word we need, then sure.
I support that.
Boy, I have. Well, I think our numbers are worse than what we're showing. And I'm going to be the elephant in the room. Because for the last, how many years we've had an open projected revenue source?
I know.
So.
The numbers, the number of them we based, we're working off of has been the number provided to us. I, I don't know.
I think you ought to put another billion on it.
Put another million on the deficit total.
The deficit total.
Taking a million from the projected revenue.
Yeah. I mean, I went back and looked at our, our revenue stream for the last five years. And they took an average and we're not increasing, but 511,000 dollars a year. Not millions like we've been projecting.
So you think.
If we don't do something to correct that, we will continue down this route.
Do you have any leeway in that number? I think I'm looking at a thirteen five, and you're looking at a twelve five. And you say we increase by five hundred thousand. Would it be safe to start at an even thirteen?
I, I, if it was my money, I would not. That's just me.
It's all of our money.
Well, I mean, that's, that's the citizen's money. I would not. Because I don't see where we're getting it. If anybody can come up with something better, please speak.
Well, I think the compensation would be. I think the compensation would be, what would, rather than arguing with you on it, what, and how would you suggest we further reduce from the existing suggestions to compensate for that then?
I don't understand anything he said.
How, how would you?
Are you going to make up the additional difference?
Can you swing up, I mean, can you turn volume up on here? Try it again, Joe.
I said, I'm not arguing with Todd on that point. I'm just saying, and so what else would you do, Todd, in addition to what's already being recommended to close the existing gap? What would you do to clo- to close what you're proposing as a further gap?
We're going to have to do a whole lot of stuff, and it's going to make a lot of people mad.
Yes, and what are those? Let's please be specific.
Well, we can do a M and T. We can do meals. One other thing, debate franchise was not in your figure because it hadn't been collected yet. So that is a sixty thousand dollar bonus. It would go into your number, but I have it in mind. So it really makes ours even farther apart.
Hold on, Brady, explain that.
Bank fans, franchise fee.
Okay.
It hadn't been collected yet.
Okay.
But it's coming.
All right.
Benji wants to do something with dog tags. I think we need to look at all kinds of fees. We need to look at everything from beginning to end.
I guess maybe I misunderstood what David had said then, because I thought David said all those suggestions were already being baked, baked in, and he, because those were on this eighth page of of the slides that are out, was the meals tax, the M and T change, the decal fees, et cetera, not dog tags, but the others.
Did I misspeak? Did these tax increases, personal property, all that's not figured in this two point one?
It's not figured in.
No, nothing added into that.
Everything in the presentation was just suggestions in terms of what each penny would give you, or a quarter would give you, or what it would give you for those rates.
Well, that's what I originally thought, which is why I asked David, like, so tell us what you're suggesting we actually go change as a starting point.
So maybe we go to the main revenue generators, and we start there and look at those and see how much of increase in each would would generate. Is that?
I think that would be, I think that would be helpful, yes.
Okay.
Do we, we want to go there? Or you want to continue with your stuff? You want?
No, I think we just need to, we have to look at everything to generate something.
So we're working off of. We're working, we're working off of two, one, eight, four, one, forty-one deficit. Is that the number?
No, no.
He's saying three, two.
It's, well, he's doing two, two, eight, four, right?
Yeah, well, it's, we started, the worksheet starts at two, one, seven, four.
That's the way.
Add the hundred thousand.
That's right.
EMS, that's two, two, seven, four. If you cut, you all agreed on the unfilled positions. So if you, if you froze those, you would subtract a hundred and thirty thousand. That would bring you to two, one, four, four, which I think is what David was mentioning. So you're two, one, four, four. Mr. Robinson would like to add a million to that two, one, four, four. So if you added a million to the two, one, four, four, it'd be three, one, four, four. So you're, we're either working from two, one, four, four, one, four, one, or three, one, four, four, one.
Would you say the other number is that you have, that sixty?
Sixty thousand dollar bank fee.
But it's.
Franchise fee.
Project, that might be in the projections. It just might not be in our actuals.
I know it was missing at one time. In one of these things we had, it was a zero. I don't know if it was number one.
We'll set that to a side.
Yeah, he's definitely right. It was. Yeah, he's definitely right. It was originally missing.
What was the? I lack your idea of that's a bonus, did that take?
Not much.
Well, right now, you're two, one, four, four, one, four, one, doesn't include your COLA.
That's right.
So any bonus or anything like that would add on to that.
I'm going, I'm going to push for the COLA.
I agree with that too, Dave.
I think we need to give our employees, and I'm going, I'm going to sidetrack here. Two days ago, we had a dog bite up in the paint. I ran the EMS call. The first person was, they originally got bit. Broke his skin, wanted to go get checked out. A stray dog, didn't have any records on him. The house was, the dog was at another person's house. I went there. The lady was just talking to the dog like it was petting it, like every, it was nothing going on. Animal control came, she was talking to the dog, she petted it, she was in the process of scanning it, and that dog flipped. And our animal control officer got bit three times. Broke skin on each time. If that ain't worth a three percent raise, I'm, I'm going to push for the three percent.
That's the least about worse.
Well, that's, we, it came up. We'll take them, we'll take them as they come up.
I support you, and I think that is the right approach, though. Take each one and just let's work through each item on here. Yeah.
Well, are you running the numbers?
So two, one, four, four, one, four, one. And if you added the one forty for the COLA, that's the route we went. It'd be two, two, eight, four, one, four, one. Again, Mr. Robinson is suggesting three, two, eight, four, one, four, one. He'd be suggesting a million deficit higher.
I see, I see where you're coming from on that. Can we, can we add that million at the end?
Yeah, I don't care.
Let's work off.
What was your number again?
Two, two, right now?
Yeah.
It's two, two, eight, four, one, four, one. That's including the one thirty decrease for the unfilled.
Okay, so that's including the unfilled.
And it's, it's now including the one forty increase for the three percent COLA. The two, two, eight, four, one.
What do you mean?
Four, one, four, one.
Oh, hey, Doug, you say something?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Brady, I, you've done a great job with this, so I hate to question you on this, but the hundred and thirty thousand for these unfilled positions seems really low for two unfilled positions plus two part-time positions. Plus, it would be the savings of the associated healthcare, social security contributions, et cetera. Is that, you feel confident on that number? I know you've had very little time to work through these, so I mean.
I definitely think the number could be higher.
Yeah.
Uh, the sheriff's office position, we know, is about fifty. The DMV position uh, was, I think, about four, a little under forty, so that's ninety. So then you have forty thousand left, and so I did twenty thousand per part-time. That's how I figured it. Now, of course, you have all your your benefits and stuff on top of that. So if you, if you want to work from one fifty, you can work from one fifty, but I shot it low just because I didn't want. But I, I will tell you, I have not run that one thirty through all the calculations to get the specific number. And so I can definitely, I can definitely get that number from Mary Beth, get her to run the health, healthcare side, disability side, the uh, BRS for those two positions. I can all, I can get all that for you.
Okay, I would say, since we made the decision to, to freeze them, yeah, for the next round and to come back, yeah, we just take that and get the specific number. And I, I think you're right, it'll probably be higher, but for today, just keep running a little one thirty then. That's fine. I'm good. Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you, buddy.
Um, how many people in the registrar's office?
There's some part-timers.
But there's more than one.
There's registrar. There's a part-time assistant, and then it's there regularly. And then they have several other part-time.
Okay, Commonwealth attorney.
Commonwealth attorney has got.
One part-time.
One part-time.
So it's still two, with a part-time, I mean.
Yeah, three.
Three, I think.
Three. Two attorneys plus the receptionist.
Okay.
The front-end lady.
Where I'm trying to get here, the DMV has one person. She gets worked to death in there. It's not fair to her if not, by not trying to help her with somebody else. These others has got more than one person in there.
I, I understand.
I know you.
Yeah, I understand it, Mr. Jones, but, you know, she, she understands the, the bind that we're in.
Okay.
She's willing to work under those conditions. Everybody needs to understand that we don't have, we won't have somebody in there forty hours a week. If she's the only one in there, which it's been that way for at least half the time the office has been open. The, the other position has, uh, we haven't had one that's stuck.
Well, you know, I'm not trying to to lead us down that spend money if we don't have to. That, that's not the point I'm making. I just don't feel comfortable with one person. But if they do understand that we are in a bind, that's acceptable.
Yeah. She does, and we do. Services will suffer a little bit, but it adds because we haven't had the one thing.
I've seen some lines out in the hallway, and all people grumbling and griping and all, but it's just.
Yeah, but you can't keep them working.
I know. That's another problem.
It's across the board. So the elephant in the room is, we're going to have to do a tax increase. So we might as well just start talking about it. Let's move on.
I mean.
We ain't doing much.
Go back to that, to that.
I agree.
If Parks and Rec thinks it's sixteen, they can't hire, they can't find nobody at thirteen, they're not going to find nobody at sixteen.
That's right.
Because nobody wants to work.
All right. Before we move on to what you said, you had something about dog tags? We can go back to that. That's small stuff. Small stuff adds up. So you're at two, two, eight, four, one, forty-one.
Your real estate tax generates a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars a pit.
I'm a little lighter than that. Just a touch.
What you want, one eighty?
One seventy-eight, four. I'm squeezing it. I want it right. Yeah, there's a little bit there, but that's still iffy.
You can solve your problem with the twelve and a half cent tax increase on real estate.
Yeah.
That'd be your money.
Well, a three hundred thousand dollar house has three hundred and sixty dollars a year tax, which is thirty dollars a month. I think that's the easy way out. We need to look other places. Just my opinion.
So, I think we are looking at all, you know? But how much are we, I mean, so we say we take each item, so how much are we going to propose for this? If, if that's too much, throw out a number, Todd.
Yeah, I mean, we need to discuss it. What do y'all feel like?
How, how many pennies did you say?
Twelve and a half. Twenty-two, eighty-four, one, forty-one divided by one eighty-five.
And that's just real estate we're talking about. We're not talking about personal property.
Just real estate.
Or meal tax.
Nope.
Ten cents. Ten cent.
That would, that would put us at six.
You said throw out a number, throw out a number.
An eight cents, one point four.
Well, eight to nine, and look at the personal property tax. Is it the will of the board to put a meals tax in? Because you could put that on right now and start working from that new level.
And machinery tax.
You know, if I stop in Chesterfield to eat, I pay a meals tax.
Oh, yeah.
If I drive through Amelia and go to Nodaway, Blackstone, and Farnwell, I pay a meals tax.
Yep.
Well, while we're here, let's not misunderstand. I thought we agreed to number four at the beginning. Then we said at the very first meeting.
Yes, we did.
And I think we need to stick to our word. And at least try to start from there because that's what was put out there, and that's what we need to, I don't want to go up eight, twelve, whatever.
I don't, I don't think I put it out there. I said it. I don't think I put it out there as a limit. I think I just kind of.
Well, let's, let's do five right now for rough figures, just for security reasons, because I did start at five.
Sounds good. You got to just have a number to start.
That gives us right at nine million. I mean, nine hundred thousand, I'm sorry. I was wishing, okay?
All right, didn't you go Chesterfield school?
Yeah, no, I didn't go to school.
That gives us nine twenty-five.
I, I'm with Todd on it.
Are you willing to double your machinery and tools to, from one dollar to two?
It might be more than that.
I think, I think we look at it.
We don't roll up.
We looked at a chart.
Yeah.
Rated provided. I was suggesting carrying it up two dollars, carrying it to actually three fifteen. That we were still cheaper than, well, I think, we were in the middle of the road for Mr. Manning, yes.
Three sixty, I think, was.
Brady, you have.
I can average.
The chart, uh.
I got it. Just handle. We got it.
We were a dollar. I can remember it. Nodaway, one thirty-five.
I have it.
Three sixty.
What you say, Joseph?
I have it right here.
You, you want to run through them for us, Mr. Easter?
Yeah, so Buckingham, two ninety, Cumberland, three seventy-five, Dinwiddie, three thirty, Nodaway, one thirty-five, Palatine, three sixty, Prince Edward, four twenty.
So we fell in around three fifteen, we would still be in the ballpark?
Yeah, if we were three fifteen, Nodaway and Buckingham would be the only ones that would be lower than us. Cumberland would be high. I'm just, let me just review, review it real quick. Sorry, Cumberland would be higher at three seventy-five, Dinwiddie would be higher at three thirty, Palatine would be higher at three sixty, and Prince Edward would be higher at forty. Yes, we would be. Yeah, we'd be in good shape.
So what was the, you got a figure on that? If we went to three fifteen on machinery and tools?
Two nineteen a dollar.
I, I, I'm going to pull a Mr. Robinson and say I'm only comfortable projecting two hundred thousand, but.
It's just averaged out at two nineteen.
I'd say six thirty, because two hundred thousand for a dollar. Well, it's only two fifteen, it'd be, uh, four thirty additional. Four thirty. Because you're, you're, it's a two dollar fifteen cent increase, so two hundred thousand times two fifteen would be four thirty.
It's two fifteen right now.
It's one dollar. One dollar right now.
One dollar.
I mean, two, two hundred fifteen thousand.
What do you think about three fifteen, Doug?
I'm fine with that. I also agree with Brady of bringing it on the more conservative side. The, the challenge with the M and T, unlike real estate and personal property, we have records, we base it off. M and T is totally self-reported. Well, almost, I mean, almost all self-reported. You will get some negative reflections in that reporting based on the increase, so, yeah.
A lot of stuff not reported.
So what's the conservative number we can use in our list of numbers here?
This year, we, we brought in about two twenty. I don't think you should project over two hundred thousand dollars per dollar. So one dollar, we brought in about two twenty. So I think two hundred thousand dollars or lower should be the projection.
Per dollar.
Per dollar.
Yeah.
And we're going up two dollars and fifteen cents.
So at two thousand and fifteen cents, that'd be a four hundred and thirty thousand dollar revenue generation increase. So that would take your number down four hundred and thirty thousand, and the number I have.
So suggest, so suggest it at four hundred to be conservative, realistic, make it, make it an even four.
Make it four.
Make it even four.
Okay.
That's my sug- that'd be my suggestion, open for discussion, of course.
All right, so if we go to four hundred, my, uh,
My uh. The number I'm sitting at is nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars. Now, I factored in the real estate at nine twenty-five. And I think Mr. Robinson had said he felt comfortable about nine hundred thousand, so there's a twenty-five thousand discrepancy there. But at nine, factoring in your real estate, so starting at two two eight four one four one, factoring in your five cent real estate. And your two dollar fifteen cent machinery and tool, that brings you to nine hundred fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars of a projected deficit.
Alright.
Can we discuss the meals then?
Meals, meals has not been included yet.
I know, I said, just that can we, I just said, can we?
Can we, can we? If we come back to that a minute ago, I want to do all the taxes first. We still need to talk about personal property.
Well, that that is a tax and my, that, okay, we can, but my my request is to actually look at that one before making adjustments to our current highest tax rates, but okay, sure.
Okay.
You got any suggestions?
I mean, I I think, I mean, I'm fine with Taylor's or whoever administration had suggested the five percent. I think what Taylor was just saying, if I heard him correctly, was we we got moving, that we would be able to bring it, bring the date back earlier than January first. So you'd be able to see an increased percentage there. I also thought what Brady had said earlier about the percentage that the businesses retain for their efforts, I think that is consistent with what I've seen at a lot of localities um as well. I was fine with both of those suggestions.
But at that rate, they go make three percent, the county makes two.
No, 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 they make.
No, it was a point.
Percent of the one hundred that they're turning in, yep.
Okay.
Three, three dollars per hundred dollars.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we wanna hit it at five or we wanna try to six?
I say during, I think it's worst case scenario, then we can always go back and back off.
So what would be?
Try to get it towards balanced.
So at a six percent meals tax, it would be one hundred and fifty thousand?
At least, that's a minimum. When I factored in uh meals tax.
That only started at January two, so.
Yep. Meals tax, go ahead.
Well, what was Taylor's, what was Taylor's thoughts on the earliest it could act, it could reasonably start?
Because it's every local business that serves meals, I think it's gonna take some time to to make it fair and make it right. I think it'd probably be effective January the first.
Okay, that's fine. I thought, I might, I probably misunderstood what you were saying a minute ago then. Thank you.
So we can figure about a hundred and fifty on that?
Well, that's a very modest projection and here's why, cause I only factored in the gross receipts of your brick and mortar restaurants. You're also gonna pick up prepared food at gas stations, you're gonna pick up prepared food at vendors that go to special events and caterers. And so I I projected annually at six percent, you'd be three hundred and six thousand dollars. Based on the gross receipts of the fourteen brick and mortar restaurants. If you add in all that other stuff, it'll be on top, but I think one fifty is a really conservative projection. If y'all wanna go higher than that, that's my methodology.
Now, stay conservative.
What do y'all want to go on?
Well, we, that's more than just conservative, you know that's too low because you're not factoring in anybody else.
Yeah, more. The issue with the.
You're not even fact, you're not even factoring in all that that Food Line will have to collect, Food Line will have to collect them on everything from their debt, from their prepared foods and their dally and all.
The the issue with not with determining that is right now, we don't.
Oh, I agree. So I know, we can't, yeah, I get it. You can't estimate, yeah, you you're gonna have to take your finger in the wind. I mean, it's at least two hundred. It's at least another fifty thousand though. I mean, I think you're very safe still at two hundred thousand estimate, but I wouldn't go higher than that.
Alright, then we hit the fifty thousand for sewer.
I mean, we ain't done with the meals tax, but.
Fifty thousand would be an additional eight hundred and fifty million dollars of revenue. I mean, sorry, eight hundred fifty thousand dollars of revenue. So right now, between the fourteen brick and mortar restaurants, we calculated about five point one of gross receipts. So it'd be another eight hundred fifty, so it'd be about six billion of gross receipts if you factored in another fifty thousand on the one fifty.
Leave it like it is.
We wanna figure one fifty?
You wanna go one seventy-five and meet in the middle?
I think it's actually. I'm saying, I'm figuring at any of the gas stations, field day, the gas, the prepared, I don't know.
Is Palatin here with meals tax?
Palatin doesn't.
They don't.
They don't.
Alright, well, that's where everybody's gonna go eat.
Well, the gas is not cheaper than a million right now, so might as well just stay in the bin.
Yeah, they're not gonna save my, they're not gonna save anybody driving over that. That's just right.
Alright.
So.
Mr. Easter, are you okay with splitting the difference?
I am.
One seventy-five?
I am, yes, thank you.
So we're at one eighty-four, one forty-one?
I'm down to. If you take out, if you start at two two eight four one four one, take out your real estate at nine twenty-five, your machinery and tools at four hundred. And your meals tax at one seventy-five, I'm at seven eighty-four, one forty-one.
Good. If we um. If we suspend the six, the road, the decal funds for one year. That's about a hundred and seven thousand.
Yep.
Think go out and bump it up five and put their stickers back in there. And that might alleviate some of the problem, call it sticker tax anyway. Send it with the paperwork, so that costs any extra mailing. And that might help alleviate some of the dump site issues that they're start looking for decals.
So you wanna do the five dollar increase in decal?
Yeah.
And then if we suspended.
That's just.
It's two fourteen.
Two fourteen.
Yeah.
We all think my debt.
I do, I do not agree with the the statement of actually starting to issue decals again. And I've been, I don't wanna get us off track, but we've been through this with the the landfill and I've talked to the landfill advisory committee, it will not help at the landfill. And the landfill agrees with that. But I'll compromise with Benji on the amount, if he'll compromise with me on that.
You don't get.
Say it again, Joseph.
All of it?
Then it did last part.
Not all of this, last part.
But I'll compromise with Benji if he'll compromise with me on that. I'll support his amount if he'll, if he'll support the uh not actually re-implementing the decals themselves. And you can't mail them out, and you can't mail, and you cannot mail.
There's three other people in here. You know where I stand, where you standing?
You can't mail, you cannot mail them out, by the way, with the existing mailing, cause that's a bill.
Why?
Would, because you wouldn't have paid them at that point, so if you gave them that.
You're getting, you're getting a bill anyway, just have it on the bill.
Well, then you're giving it, and then they put the sticker on, and if they haven't paid, then you've accomplished nothing.
What happens when you don't pay your bill?
Then you get, uh, you can't sell your vehicle, cause they put a, they put a block on the sale through DMV.
You don't pay your bills, you give, you know, it's a responsibility.
Well, then if you're gonna just hand out decals free willy-nilly, whether you pay or not, just let them pick them up at the library regardless. I mean, what's the point then?
It's three other people here. What do you want me? We used to have a sticker and it all worked out.
Yeah.
I'm not doing something totally new. I mean, I happen to live in a dumpster, beside a dumpster that has probably had out day trash in her right hand.
That's what I'm saying.
They don't check the vehicles.
No, and they said they won't.
And I mean, I know these people by day, but I know some of them.
Somebody give me a consensus, three of them.
You can't mail the sticker with the bill, cause that defeats the whole purpose.
Yeah.
While you're paying for stuff that you can't, you're paying property tax, you're paying everything anyway, that they don't take your tools. You still gotta pay your bill. What happens if you don't pay your power bill?
Well, they cut it off.
Alright, you go. What happens if you don't pay your real estate taxes?
Well, that's a different thing, Dave. Of course, but I mean, what are you gonna do if you send the the sticker with the bill? And it doesn't get paid.
And you can't revoke the sticker.
It depends on what your renewal is on your plates, whether you're on a one-year, two-year, three-year cycle to before anybody can get you.
But it's a bogus thing anyway. It means last time they both had a sticker.
When the dogs send the sticker?
You still pay it, right? You still pay it?
How much it costs us?
What, the twenty dollars? I don't know what it is. You still pay it, don't you?
Uh, I think you pay an extra for it, yes.
Yes, we still pay for it. You still barely pay it. What's the difference? You're not getting a sticker anyway, so now.
Well, it's not a decal. First of all, it's not an actual, we're just using the random language. It's not actually a decal fee, it's called a, it's called something else, but.
So false advertising.
No, we're just using the not, we're using the not right, right language in this meeting.
Well, didn't we get sticker in January all of? But it was four years. Thank you, Mike.
So does the majority want the sticker back?
David just stepped out.
He had enough, he went home.
I think I'm joining.
Let's let's sideline this one for a minute till I get an answer back on the cost of producing stickers. I mean, if it costs six dollars to make a sticker.
I don't know, I've seen it, I don't know.
We go ask, we go ask.
So you're telling me, uh, the twenty bucks you pay for inspection, six dollars of it for a sticker?
It's a different sticker than what these are. It's paper.
I don't have to down the sale, I'm just saying.
I'm just saying.
We'll find out that two birds in one stone.
But what's the bird? Everybody's. If the bird is the dump, the dump has said they will not check the stickers, so you haven't solved any birds there.
Alright, there's two questions on the table. Do we raise the decal five dollars? We have one yes. Mr. Robinson?
I mean, yes, let's, we'll say yes right this second.
Dexter?
I reckon we're gonna have to.
Joseph? We're gonna discuss whether we, whether we need a county, a decal later on, but how about the five dollar increase?
I mean, the five dollar increase, whether you get a sticker or not.
Yeah.
Basically, what it's saying.
What's your thought?
I don't think you heard it.
No, I did. I don't know. I haven't, I haven't voted yet.
And so the five dollar increase would generate an additional one oh seven, correct? Cause we bring it in one oh seven now, so be.
So what?
You add two fourteen.
Two fourteen.
You'd add two fourteen to your numbers.
Two fourteen, if we're taking the five, we're suspending that one to the road.
From the, from the special fund.
Yeah.
And pray it and allow it into the general fund. So pending an ordinance amendment.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry about that. So. Your total figure right now, seven eight four one four one minus two fourteen, that would bring you down to five hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars.
Five seventy?
Five, seven, zero, one, four, one.
Alright, did we talk anything about personal property tax?
We have not at this time, or you all have not.
One penny is sixteen thousand dollars.
Are we like?
No, we're right.
What's the next highest?
The next highest is uh. Prince Edward at four fifty. We're at four fifteen, Cumberland and Prince Edward are four fifty, Dinwiddie's four sixty.
Thirty-five cents to balance the budget. Thirty, what'd you say? Thirty-five point six three.
That will put us the same as Cumberland and Prince Edward.
Well, just a touch hold on.
Alright, what y'all think? How many pennies is that?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five pennies.
That's taken into what? Four sixty?
Four fifty plus. It it brings you to five seventy, one forty-one?
Five seventy, one forty-one is your remainder.
It was the balance that we were in the red.
Right.
If you wanted to balance that based on an increase in personal property, you would add the thirty, thirty-five point six cents, thirty, thirty-six cents.
Not to change the subject, but good news, we haven't factored in the sewer rate increase, which I think all the board members were favorable towards. That would be fifty thousand. That would make the personal property increase potentially less.
I'm not gonna be in favor personally of any personal property increase further, as long as we, we are still adding in a position for the assessors. I think we're making all these, the citizens suffer more with all these increased taxes, which we don't have a lot of choices. We cut unfunded positions. I think we need to do that across the board. That's, I realize it may not be the majority, but that's my opinion.
Well. He is talking, you said the water sewer, you want thirty, fifty thousand in there now?
Do I wanna subtract the fifty thousand from the five seventy?
Yeah.
For the water sewer, okay. So the sewer rate increase brings you down to five twenty, one forty-one.
What's the uh average? I don't know. What's the average hookups? We're talking about changing back to the old these.
Most of your hookups are your five eight inch and it's like three thousand for water, four thousand for sewer.
So what was the average?
Number of hookups, um, not, not many.
Cause I work back.
Well, there's not many, because there hasn't been many new houses the last few years. They have a few new houses, there's been a couple on Virginia Street. So uh, there's, so there's been a few, but we have the forty-nine home subdivision that was approved on Dunn Street. So that fee increase would factor into that development. And then we've had, we've, we've had a couple developers make contact, larger developers.
So that's wicked.
But nothing.
Just.
For your facility fees.
Yeah, there's.
Yep.
If there was an average saving in the mouth here or.
Well, they need to be looked at. I think we need to look at some of the fees.
I I don't disagree about looking at them, but Taylor had a good point earlier. I mean, you go raising those fees a lot and large developers like that, it's a huge hit for them. Particularly like, you're gonna feel like this one that already said they were gonna come in, multiply any increase across forty whatever homes. It's gonna make people reconsider some of the development.
Well, I'm sorry, I meant to look up Chesterfield's taffees and I hadn't had a chance to do it.
Okay.
Cause I, I think they're up there, way up there.
How would that affect apartments?
Each apartment gets a taffy.
Each apartment gets a.
Uh-huh.
What about?
Yep.
Well.
Unless they do it as a communal, there is some of those around that'll.
Well, that's true.
Like a hotel, they'll do like one big water line and you're, they do an average speed for water and sewer built into your rent.
Just for information, the number that was, so it's half of what was recommended in two thousand and seven. Currently, we charge half of what was recommended in two thousand and seven, and that number in two thousand and seven, what they figured off of is the cost of an average per gallon a day, three-bedroom residential usage, basically, in terms of what that would cost per gallon towards the treatment facility. So they average up a per gallon cost for that, and then they take that number and extrapolate it out in terms of per connection, how much they should pay.
So it's a floating rate.
Well, they technically, as inflation occurs and the time goes on, it's something that would likely go up, cause our costs of treating the wastewater and providing water go up, so that's what the connection fee is.
Well, we can get some more information on that. That, that's not gonna affect the operating. Well, we can get some more information on that. That, that's not gonna affect the operating.
That won't affect the general fund, so it's really not a item.
Well, can you get some information and have it for us at the general, general meeting? So we're at five twenty, folks, and we still have the personal property on the table. Somebody talk to me.
I gave you my opinion.
You did?
I mean, at this point, we are trying to close the entire gap by more push on citizens with higher taxes. I think there's a time where we go, let's take a look, flip over and see what more of this gap can we do with other cuts. Right? And I'm sorry, it's not the entire, because we did freeze the positions. I apologize. But let's look at some of these other cuts that we could do to spending.
And let's trace to the capital outlay too, which those are not services, but the fire truck, the uh, five, sit five sheriff's vehicles and the.
Although, uh, those were already taken before the, before we started working on today. You're, you're right. From today, from today's numbers, yes, I was referring to today's numbers.
Yes, sir.
They were already taken out?
Well, last meeting we had, last meeting we discussed the fire truck. We had not discussed sheriff's vehicles and the ambulance, taking those out last meeting.
All right.
This meeting, those, but that's all, but that, that number is factored into your five twenty. The three ninety one for the sheriff's vehicles and the one fifty for the ambulance. Now, for transparency purposes, the one fifty for the ambulance is just because we're not gonna receive the ambulance until FY twenty six, and we don't have to uh, service that last payment until we receive it, till that time.
Yeah, so it's not really.
That does come out of your capital outlay, but your capital outlay is a line in your general fund. It's not your capital improvement fund.
So are these, that one fifty, three ninety one, four forty, that has already been taken out of the five twenty?
Yep.
All right, let's move on.
So you're at five twenty.
We're back at, we're back at the personal property.
I had proposed twenty five cents in what I had.
Twenty five.
That would get you about four hundred thousand additional dollars.
Anything we do, whether we raise taxes or cut more. Some people are, aren't gonna be happy because we, we in a situation where we got to do something and this didn't happen overnight. This happened over a course of time. Coming to this point, this volcano just erupted on us. Now we gotta fix this. We can't do but so much on cutting because we're cutting our fruits if we keep cutting, cutting, cutting. And I'm, I'll be honest with you. I don't want a tax increase.
I don't either.
Don't want, but as I told Mr. Brady when we were sitting, you said that if we, if we increase taxes, where does that put us in our region? And we still almost the lowest around. We still are.
And everybody's going through the same thing we're going through right now. So there's a big change.
And sitting in some of my committees up in Thornville, Keyesville and all that, this is happening everywhere. It's not just a million. They're sitting up there scratching their head. What are we gonna do? How do we provide services to the county? Cause we don't have the money. Schools, everybody. We, we, yeah, we need to cut some, some of the fat, but we can't cut all the fat because we're cutting our own self. But we still pay for.
The two items that this budget includes is EMS expansion and the assessor's office. So those are two items that you could cut, which are additional that you could look at.
You can't cut EMS. And you know, we gotta go where it's going, even though it's a added cost, you've still got to, you gotta make that step. Cause if you call nine one one, everybody's expecting somebody to show up.
The only, the only thing, and I, I agree with you conceptually, the only thing is, I did talk to them. They do feel like their numbers are extremely conservative. And that it assumes that they have almost no luck in hiring for a very, very long time. They did say they think there's a likelihood of being able to reduce the reduce the increase by up to a hundred thousand. I do think we could go back and push on them a little bit more for getting it to their most realistic numbers, not, not, you know, not getting something that's crazy, but asking them to, to relook at that, uh, from my conversations.
I had to say in conversation, I think we could possibly drop out about a hundred thousand.
I, I do, I do too. That's the same, that's the same number I came away with from the conversation with David.
So if you reduce EMS a hundred thousand, that brings you down to four twenty. Is that consensus?
Why has there not been, um, a vehicle factored in for this assessor's office?
We have spares sitting around.
Why are we sitting around with spare vehicles?
Cause we always have them apparently.
The sheriff's office got a whole row of them up there.
We have, uh, we have, right now, we have two vehicles. We have a Dodge Charger that was one of the police cars that had been phased out, that was being used by the environmental management, uh, the environmental manager, um, and, or when she was in the ENS role. There's a blue Ford Explorer that was being used by the environmental manager. The environmental management group got a new truck last year. And I'm sure, is that, was that landfill funds that paid for that? Landfill funds paid for the new truck. So the ENS inspectors driving the Explorer that the environmental manager was driving, and there's the maroon Dodge Charger. The only other vehicle is the old vehicle the county administrator formerly drove, correct? I think back in Mr. Van Orbeck, we have a Crown Victoria. And that vehicle's there. So there's two vehicles and they are used pretty much by staff if staff needs a vehicle to traverse somewhere.
You have Kent's too, cause he's got a truck coming.
And, yep. Kent would have a vehicle, correct? Yep. So then Kent is getting a new truck. So he would have a vehicle too. So there'd be three.
So how many new cars is the sheriff getting?
Zero right now. He had requested.
How many, how many does he have that are coming out of this budget?
So currently he is gonna get five, y'all fully funded five last year. Uh, now he has four other ones that are out there as well because of some wrecks. So he got a couple through insurance. There was a credit from Sheehy for one that was paid for a couple of years ago. So we have a credit there. And then he has, uh, five that were funded in the budget.
If we don't get something straight here now, Lord help us next year. We got to have some money coming into this county one way or another, because we're, it's gonna be even worse next year this time. And what are we gonna cut next year? We done cut everything to the bone almost now. The assessor, we think is gonna make us some money. He's gonna find some stuff. We're pretty sure of that, but I mean, it is crap shoot any way you look at it. But eliminating things that has a potential to bring income in is not the best choice. Hopefully it's not gonna cost us that much. It's gonna pay for itself and bring income in. That's, that's just, that's business.
Mr. Feltz, I'm at four twenty, one forty one. Is that, you got four hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and forty one dollars. That included a hundred thousand dollar reduction to EMS.
Yeah, I don't like that. Was there something on that? The squad, did we hit a little wiggle room here?
I think there's probably some wiggle room with the local contribution to AES. I think they've had some donations recently, pretty significant. But, uh, this, this might be the year that we could drop the one thirty that we will support down to say eighty. Probably save about fifty there.
Well, okay. Let's just take everything we can take and then we can look back and add.
What happens when you said everybody to three?
Hang on. Let me stay in the frame.
I'm kinda sitting around three seventy right now.
No, I'm doing my running man right here.
You got the million on top of them.
Not on this figure, I don't.
What's your figure?
Well, I'm still one point three seven.
Yeah, cause you got the million add.
You got the million add.
That's fine.
But I mean, I don't have it written down right here.
We go tackle that here in a minute.
Yeah. I was just going by his numbers right now. We using all this.
All right, what, what's, we never did finish up the personal property. Yeah, you're Nate. We need to move on or we need to do what we gotta do. We were within our arms reach of fixing this thing. The first phase of it.
Well, you know, there's a lot of people that pay personal property, don't pay real estate.
Yep.
And there's a lot of people who pay real estate that's older, don't have kids in the school, and these folks that more, more likely are younger people who are renting and they got kids. So if you follow my drift where I'm trying to go with this and all, to be fair, we got to look at personal property too.
Twenty four cents puts you into black.
Four thirty nine, that still puts us on the low side of the average in this part of the state.
Now, what is the projection of B H P this year? Are they supposed to be projecting down or staying the same? Or what are we doing on these vehicles, on B H P's?
I thought they kinda evened out through a PowerPoint I seen.
Kind of like settled down now. We're just coasting along.
And actually, if I understand this right, and what Mr. Deal was telling me, there will only be one county actually lower than us in this potting. Cause Notaway, what was you telling me? Majority of the pop, well, not the majority, bud.
Well, the thing about, like, for example, Notaway, their their personal property is lower than ours. They're three fifteen. Their tax rate is forty eight cents, ten cents higher than ours. But Notaway has a population of fifteen thousand people. Almost seven thousand of that fifteen thousand live in either Blackstone, Crew or Burford.
That's right.
So they're not only paying the Notaway taxes, they're paying town taxes on top of that. So when you look at a county like Notaway, which is our, our closest competitor in terms of the region and our tax uh, rates, they also have three towns that forty percent of their population lives in one of those three towns and pays town taxes on top of the county taxes.
And some of them even in cost or oh yeah, so they don't have a core area.
So, you know, the figure on them is a little misleading, you know, what they actually, my, my point is, if we got to do something and there goes where it hit, what we propose was still the cheapest to land.
One other thing I think everybody needs to keep in mind is we reassessed a year out of sequence. So we equalized last year. So our rates have been equalized to current values, whereas Prince Edward, Notaway, Lunenburg, they're all undergoing it right now. So their equalization will be coming forward either this year or next. So we're not exactly comparing apples and apples.
There could be a change in their rate.
They, they could drop, if they decide to equalize, correct. They could be dropped.
Smiley, give me a number.
Would you say twenty four?
Twenty four.
Joseph, I know you're against that, but you heard that?
I did. Thank you.
What's the, what's the amount on that?
I would make it four thirty nine, four fifteen to four thirty nine.
Yeah.
It's about, let's see. I'm, I'm figuring sixteen thousand a penny. I'm figuring three hundred and eighty four thousand is what I figured. It's sixteen thousand a penny.
Three eighty four?
Yep. That would leave you with.
Between the black, I think.
Six of the black.
How much we were at, what were we at? Three seventy?
Yeah, three seventy, one forty one.
Yep, so with that.
Thirteen, thirteen, eight fifty nine, I think. To the black. Which is something you could put on paper if you wanted to. Carry it to your next board of supervisors meeting as a balanced option. Discuss it at that point in time, make whatever adjustments you want to. And then have something you could put out for public hearing and get your public input. This is not something that's needs to be agreed upon, that's gonna be adopted tonight. But we've gotta get to a point where we can put something up for the general public to, to speak to.
Well, that's, um.
I say keep going. Well, let's see what we can do.
I'm, I'm, I'm turning to you now because.
Turn to me.
You know, we're working off of thirteen, five of revenue. You say it's twelve five.
Uh, well, I'm just going off of.
Your recommendation is twelve five.
Projected numbers that we have collected revenue that has actually entered the bank account. It has hit the general fund.
Okay.
It's there. It's a real number.
So where do we go from here?
I don't know.
So. So you start us a new column.
Your dog tag.
Well, yeah, I didn't generate a whole lot, but something.
It's gas.
Uh, my suggestion is right now we got like six different tags. Knock it down to three. Uh, a yearly, a kennel and a lifetime. Right?
Hey. Turn your microphone so somebody can hear you.
All right, so look at the average numbers. I'm combining price because there's different prices for neutered versus fade and all that. So I'm suggesting the, the ying, the annual at fifteen, a kennel, uh, which would be uh, twenty plus dogs. Make that fifty. So if you look at the, um, that's three and a half dogs. So you can have a lot more dog, kennel at fifty, uh, oh, sixty. I did it wrong. I gotta get in the Microsoft. Either way, it generates about ten thousand dollars.
And that's all we have.
I redone it. I wrote the wrong number.
I tell you, make it easy. He, he says it's about ten thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Is everybody fine with increasing the dog tags and you work out the numbers with the animal patrol and whoever?
Actually, Stephanie, you, you gotta work it out with Stephanie only.
Stephanie, yeah, all the whole, all the folks. So we good? We putting ten thousand dollars to it? The dog tags?
In, in theory, if he pushes a little harder, it is a little blown fact, because I don't think people necessarily pay him, because I don't know how hard it's being pursued right now. No offense to him. I don't, I, I didn't even talk to him, but I just, that's his word on the street. Uh, if it's pursued a little bit more, they will definitely go one way.
Okay.
Well, the leash law must be taking effect here shortly, isn't it?
Yeah, this weekend. Turkey season starts.
And that's when you supposed to.
What about turkey law?
Huh?
Turkey law.
Turkey season start.
All right, I can get with her.
Well, we, you should confirm your numbers up and come back to us. We, I got ten thousand in. I think Brady's got ten thousand.
Yep, that's twenty.
Right, that's twenty-four to pull up to us.
Yeah, twenty-three, eight fifty-nine.
The bank fee is not in there. That's sixty grand.
That's not in our current.
It's not in your numbers. So you need to add sixty into that.
Franchise fee.
So that's eighty-four.
So no department came back with any suggestions for changing fees this year, period. We had to put, right?
Utilities for, uh, water and sewer. That was the only one.
Well, no, they didn't even come back to that. We had to push twice to request that.
Yeah, I think, I think water and sewer were, were increased last year.
Well.
And I know the planning fees for my department, we increased those last year too.
Well, but look at what inflation's doing. Costs go up every single year.
I think Parks and Recs need to be looked at.
I mean, it's hard to understand. It's, it's just hard to understand. We made requests for them to go back, look at the fees. They know the situation we're in. And nobody proactively came back with a single thing to offer us.
Well. Well, we can bring you guys, uh, something on the next time and just, you know, go again to all the department heads. And if they don't want to increase fees, we'll bring you a rationale of why they don't. And if they decide that they would like to put one forward, then we'll bring that one forward. But we'll gather rationale so that we can, uh, inform you guys of why they stand where they stand.
Can you take that?
You can through a meal's tax, because that's part of the meal. So you will get that.
No, if it's.
If they're consuming alcohol, add the meal.
But it's not a bottle.
Pardon me?
It's not bottles, right? Because you said like sodas or whatever is in a bottle, but it's got to be tap, I guess.
I don't know. I don't know.
Now, alcohol would count on your bill. I'm pretty sure a bottle of alcohol would count on your bill, the meal stacks. I can check that.
You mentioned Parks and Recs.
Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I was just saying, Brady, would you specifically follow up with Stephanie? She's saying she did send at least a fee or two over that she wanted to adjust. I'm not sure who she sent them to. She said she doesn't see that, um, that made it through.
Sure.
I mean, it's not going to be a large amount, but as we said, we're, we're still, we're trying to equalize out. So. And fees, the thing I like about fees are they are for specific services. You know, they're in exchange for things that are being done for people, um, you know, we're trying to cover our costs in that case. So, yeah.
Yes, sir.
What does Parks and Recs have in there? Wiggle room. Anybody talk to Deal?
What'd they have in there? What?
Did they, what, what do they? They have some cushion?
Well, Parks and Rec is a little bit different because they generate revenue through fees, activity fees, and, and those types of things. Um, every discussion I've had with them, they feel like they're pretty well where they need to be. We can ask them to work on that if that's a possibility of the subsidy that we, the county provides be reduced.
Are you fine with looking into fees with Parks and Recs?
Oh, I definitely am. I think particularly, you know, like, um, I think it was Dexter earlier making the point about like the increasing their, their minimum wage, which I, I do also agree with Dexter. I'm not sure you'll find the workers. That's a different, that's a different situation. But, you know, I think we could ask them definitely to offset that increase that they're looking for with, uh, you know, fee increases as well.
All right. We'll have you guys a full fee schedule to review next meeting.
And you have all this nice and pretty for us, I assume?
I will do my best to factor in all of y'all's changes to the documentation.
You've done a good job so far.
Yeah, great job.
Y'all have been great. I appreciate all of you.
I have one of them. These events that we hate, just how much money does that generate overall? Two days in the past, a truck attractor pulls and the fright fest.
Cost of entertainment.
So it don't really help the county at all.
They'll do all food.
And the food tax, yeah. Yeah, it's just.
So in theory, in theory, it increases, um, business license revenue, which by the way, we did not look at that. Uh, that was when we looked at taxes, that was not on the options. But it does increase that. So for example, the revenue earned from fright fest or the truck pulls, you know, goes back into a locally owned business. We do have business, you know, license taxes. So that revenue from that event would then a portion of that would come back to us as a government. Um, we're doing a million day. Those businesses that earn, and you, you know, our limit right now is more than twenty-five hundred per year. So it's got to be businesses that are earning more than that. If they're, they're, the revenue comes in, that increases it, and then that comes back as tax revenue to us. That's the biggest, that's the biggest way with field day. You know, hopefully they're also spending money at the gas stations and other things while they're traveling through. That was one of, when they came to us originally wanting field day, that was one of the big benefits they were, they were touting. We have no way of really tracking, you know, how much technically people spend there though.
Well, would you be fine getting staff to look up, bring us all the amounts and load speeds that we look at at the boarding? Or look at it the next time we look?
Oh, yeah. I mean, I don't, I, I like, you see, you see, I'm in favor of the fee, the fees thing. The fees, the fees for events are incredibly low.
It's twenty-five dollars for one day event, fifty dollars for a two day, a hundred dollars for a three day.
Yeah. They're, they're super low.
Can you look into that?
Yeah, I can. Yes, sir.
All right.
Well, this is an old school thought and it probably won't go nowhere. But since he's got an extra million on the table, I know without a kid, I ain't gonna do it anymore. Bonds. The, the bonds, I remember as a kid, we get bonds and last twenty years, yes, they will, but it's also, we're trying to recoup some money. I don't know if that's a thought to consider.
Don't know if we have any bonds, do we? We have some in the landfill, but those are.
So that's borrowing.
Well, I know, but it's a, we're in a predicament and that gives us, what, ten, twenty? I don't know how it's set up.
But we reached out to Robert Lauderberg, it'd be a male makeup finance, to talk about the monies that we have spent for the radio project for Wells Fargo project and possibly going to spend for the animal shelter. It was over ten million dollars, even though we've already spent some of it. We've asked him to take a look at things and see if there's some sort of way that we could issue some debt to recoup that money based on those investments we made. He, I'm supposed to have a meeting with him next Friday. And we'll talk a little bit further about what it's going to take for his organization to do a financial analysis, be a cost to it, do a financial analysis and make a recommendation on that, which would free up some money.
I'm, Joseph and I's had, I'm, I'm against borrowing money. But I could be persuaded. But for the ones of us that just got elected for four years, I wouldn't want to leave a problem for somebody else. So if we can do something in four years, give us some debt service, recoup some of these funds, build a fund balance backup, I'd be willing to hear them out. That's just my two cents. And staff is going to talk with Lauderberg and give us some info. Not saying we're gonna do it, just some options. Anybody else got anything?
I do have one more suggestion.
Go.
I think maybe we should have some call with an official statement to give Dwayne to put out, kind of explain about what we're going through and what we're doing and uh, that, that way he didn't have to create it. It's a kind of an official statement from, hey, we're in a predicament. We're open book. We're, we're telling everybody what's going on and how we're trying to fix it. I just think it's, well, that might be the only person.
We're open for the people's suggestions. I mean, we serve the people and maybe somebody out there's got something that we've all overlooked. It's a possibility, but I don't think.
You fine with doing that?
You're talking about a press release, I guess?
Just something that, hey, this is how we got here and this is what we're trying to look at to kind of, you know.
I think we can take some of Mr. Deal's slides that he has provided over the last couple of meetings and put something together. Maybe paint a picture as to where we are for somebody that's not been able to attend the meeting or tune into the meeting or read the newspaper. So certainly we can.
Well, it, it, it looks like this goes back several years and we just need to, hey, we're not trying to hide anything.
Yeah.
It's all right here.
The volcanoes come, come to tear.
Well, gentlemen, we have balanced one budget. We have it balanced. You have no reason that.
There is no cola in this.
No, we, we factored the cola in.
We did factor it.
You did it in the beginning?
Yep.
Yep.
We did. We went from two, two, seven, four, one, four, one down.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
We pulled something out.
We pulled out the unfunded positions at one thirty, which would, like Mr. Easter pointed out, would likely be one fifty, one sixty possibly.
That's right.
Okay.
Put the coal in instead.
Put the coal in.
Um. We've got down to a number where we're below one projection of expenditures. Where we would not probably would not have to go into the fund balance to just one operating cost. Um. I would ask Mr. Robinson, Todd, to come back Wednesday with some further information and possible stuff that we can get to, to his, to the million, or could we meet halfway? I, I see your point. I see the point that the staff got. So we settled in somewhere in half and we'd have to come up with four hundred thousand.
Well, I don't know why I'm gonna come up with it. Just Benzy volunteered to come to the house Friday night. We stayed up till two thirty in the morning trying to figure it out. And it never, I never did it. The only way I see doing it is a tax increase. You can't keep punishing everybody. And I still think some of these departments are, will probably need to increase postage, gas, fuel. All of that's back up.
Well, since y'all had a late night, I try, y'all come back Wednesday with suggestions of this extra make. And we'll listen to it.
Well, I agree with Mr. Robinson over there. It's like I said, oh, we can't cut so much. We're starting to cut our own sets. We got to. We got to think of all it now, but next year also. We can't put ourselves that these, we keep cutting these departments and then next year, they're going to be desperate and really need a pile of money. And where we're going to come up with it.
Joseph, I don't even, you have, have any suggestions on any more revenue that we're not looking at? Please let us know.
I, I appreciate it. I don't want to argue with Todd. I don't feel he's necessarily wrong. It's possible that the projections are too high, but I'm not sure that I would go further at this point. And if I have better suggestions, I will certainly come back with them. Yes.
Okay. All right.
But this puts nothing back to any department for any kind of an increase at all.
Well, I don't think you cut the schools. I don't think we cut the schools small increase.
What, what do we have to give? What does that have to match?
And I, and of course, we didn't.
Come up.
We didn't cut the increased EMS. We didn't cut the increase, we didn't cut the increased positions to the sheriff's department.
No, they're not. The two full-time sheriff's positions were not in the level funding.
Yeah, they were already cut out.
They were not in their level funding.
Oh, so I thought we didn't, okay. Well, yeah, I know they weren't in the level funding, but I thought we were going to actually go through those just, okay.
No, I didn't put those in there. I, I would have just showed that those were additional requests that could, you all could consider adding. I'm sorry for not clarifying that, Mr. Easter.
No, no, you're, you're fine.
He's going to give us the have to match, right?
Yes, the, the figure I shared with Mr. Do yesterday or late last evening was, um, seven million, one hundred thirty-two thousand, nine hundred fifty-two. Um, there's slight, that's a slight adjustment over the seven, one hundred twenty-three, one oh six I shared previously. And that is because one of the figures in the calculation template the state has doesn't actually adjust itself based on your ADM projection. So I had to go in and do a separate calculation, make sure that was accounted for. That's the infrastructure and operations fund that has a separate local match to it. Sorry if I wasn't quite loud enough.
All right, thank you. That seven one, that's the minimum for you all to get.
That is, that is where it is with the most recent detailed information from the state. But as you know, with some of the government's governor's actions, things are still up in the air. But seven million, one hundred thirty-two, about rounding up to seven million, one thirty-three is right where it is.
And that would give you all your state funding.
That is, as a, as of the most recent detailed information we have, yes.
Subject change getting managed.
That, and that's, and that, yes, that's true. That's also assuming our ADM doesn't increase and we know it's varied quite wildly in the last couple of years where it's down considerably from last year, but it was up considerably the year prior.
Right.
So just be good to cap for.
Do you have a number on the, the RLE? Let's say there's the minimum required local effort. Not the minimum to get all the state funding, but minimum required local effort.
Yes, that was shared in the same email. That.
What figure did we see?
That was the actual RLE based on that report was six million, three hundred, three hundred forty-seven thousand, seven hundred sixty-seven. That only accounts for, um, the SOQ required areas.
So that's like a four million dollar drop.
Yeah, it's a, that basically means with that, there's more SOQ funding versus all state funding, there's a four million dollar difference. The local match difference, as you can see, is about seven hundred seventy-five thousand.
So the seven hundred seventy-five thousand from the six, three to the seven one gets you four million.
Cut you a hundred, you lose four.
Right.
There's some other factors in there. It's not exactly penny for penny in that way. Some items are earmarked, but also remember most of those incentive and categorical funds, those are, you get this funding so you can put this very specific item in your budget where it's, you know, this is specific for, um, one item is we get extra funding, about three hundred fifteen thousand dollars from the state to reduce our K through three class size maximum, twenty-four students to twenty-three. That's maximum number of kids allowed in a class. That's maximum number of kids allowed in class. Our classes are on average below that. And so the small investment we get to make on the local match side of that nets us a huge amount with having very minimal actual staffing impact, because as you know, we already have to fund over those minimum staffing standards because they have those partial teachers in. So this is really making sure we don't, you know, what's the phrase? Um, butt your nose to spite your face to those areas, and make sure we're covering all those bases and taking every penny we can get at that state allocation.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. And for, for y'all's clarification, the level funded budgets, we had them at a level seven million with ninety-one thousand dollars roughly for textbook funds, which would be seven billion, ninety-one thousand. That's what their impact is in the budget you all reviewed tonight.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate that.
So if you don't do the seven point one-three-three, you lose the four billion?
No.
You lose a percentage of the four billion?
Some of their state funds. If you go to the required local effort, which Mr. Trump said was, I can't recall, six point three something, then you would lose four million, roughly.
What? What is the reserve for social services? What is that? Two point three million.
I'm not sure what that is. I'm not sure what that is. That terminology.
Yeah, I don't know what it is neither.
All right, gentlemen. I'll take a motion to adjourn to continue meetings.
I'm moved.
Motion for floor to adjourn any discussion. All in favor, raise your hand. Joseph? Motion to adjourn. Hey, um, who you drop off? Are you in town Wednesday night?
Next week?
Next Wednesday. Oh, yeah. I keep looking at it. Are you in town next Wednesday?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
All right. You gotta understand. I know, I've, I've been looking at it a whole time.
No, it's fine. It's good. Have a good.